Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Kemp?
Here.
Cullen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
White?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thank you, Your Quorum.
Thank you. This is a very solemn day for us. We'll begin by paying tribute to a public servant who has dedicated more than thirty years of his life to protecting Hillsborough County residents, businesses, and visitors, Sergeant Brian Roy Levine of the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. I'd like to ask our Chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White, to conduct the pledge and invocation. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I'll ask that if you're able to, to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning. And as always, Lord, I ask for your blessings and that you will watch over all of our brave men and women who served in our armed forces and who are first responders. And I especially, this morning, Lord, ask for your blessings upon the family of the fallen hero that we will be recognizing this morning. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. On January 11th of this year, Sergeant Brian Roy Levine made the ultimate sacrifice. He was killed in the line of duty while rushing to his colleague's aid to apprehend a suspect. All of our hearts are broken because when we lose one of our first responders, it profoundly affects us all. This board offers its sincerest condolences to his family and his colleagues who have joined us today. And I see that Sergeant Levine's family members are present, virtually, and welcome, and thank you for being here. And now I'd like to recognize Commissioner Smith. Commissioner, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As our community suffers the tragic loss of Sergeant Levine, we are hearing his life story from the people who loved him and those who worked side by side with him. And I have been profoundly moved and inspired by these stories, as I know we all are. And I hope the family takes comfort in knowing that their beloved husband and father leaves a great legacy behind in this community that will live on for generations. Established in 2010, Hillsborough County's Fallen Heroes Program recognizes law enforcement officers, firefighters, and other first responders who have given their lives in the line of duty and provides assistance to their families during times of unimaginable grief. This tribute serves as a remembrance to Sergeant Brian Roy Levine, a Hillsborough County fallen hero. In honor of his service to Hillsborough County, it is with deep reverence that I present this memoriam. It reads, "Whereas, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners recognizes individuals whose commitment and dedication have made a lasting impact on the community and its residents, and one such person is Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office Sergeant Brian Roy Levine, who was killed in the line of duty on January 11, 2021. And whereas, born on June 6, 1966, Sergeant Levine was raised in upstate New York and moved to Florida his sophomore year of high school, where he met a young woman named Kathleen who would become the love of his life. And whereas, Sergeant Levine began a distinguished 33-year career serving and protecting the community as a law enforcement officer with the Largo Police Department before joining the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office in 1990. And whereas, devoted to ensuring the public safety and held in high regard throughout the Sheriff's Office and community, Sergeant Levine served in several areas, including special investigations, community outreach, and patrol, and as a school resource officer. And whereas, Sergeant Levine, whose numerous colleagues included his daughter, further served as a field training officer who mentored many deputies, including some who went on to earn high ranks and become members of the Sheriff's Command Staff. And whereas, many times decorated, Sergeant Levine's honors included the Sheriff's Office Life Saving Award in 2017, Deputy of the Half in 1992, Outstanding Squad Award in 2014, and numerous Mothers Against Drunk Driving recognitions for his tireless efforts against drunk driving. And whereas, a man with a great sense of humor and many interests, Sergeant Levine earned a Brown Belt in Jiu-Jitsu, became a certified Spanish translator after teaching himself to fluently speak the language, and mastered the bagpipes. And he was a passionate Tampa Bay Lightning fan and soccer coach who loved traveling and a properly poured Guinness. And whereas, on the evening of January 11, 2021, with just one shift remaining before he would begin retirement, Sergeant Levine, while on patrol, quickly responded to assist fellow deputies apprehend a suspect who was eluding them but was struck by the suspect's vehicle, causing fatal injuries. And whereas, although the loss of this outstanding man is difficult to bear, his legacy lives on through the improvements he made to the community, in the way he influenced others to make a difference, and in all those whose lives he touched. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby urge all residents to join in expressing both sorrow and appreciation to his loving wife of 33 years, Kathleen Diane Russell Levine, and his children, Kaitlyn Teresa Levine and Erin Liam Levine, Mother Carol Levine, Sister Pamela Way, Brother Kevin Levine, his wife Evelyn, and other family members and his colleagues. This board hopes they take solace in the many cherished memories and positive impact Sergeant Brian Levine made during his lifetime. It's executed this third day of February 2021, signed by all seven commissioners. And in addition to this memoriam, a special plaque honoring Sergeant Levine will be presented to his family. And engraved on the plaque is the following. "Hillsborough County honors the memory of Sergeant Brian Roy Levine for his tireless dedication to the safety and well-being of others and giving his life for the good of his community as a member of the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. The loss of Sergeant Levine while on duty on January 11, 2021, is a tragedy whose grief we feel deeply and share with his family. Hillsborough County will always remember and appreciate Sergeant Levine and his family." Dedicated this third day of February 2021 by the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. And at this point, I would turn to his family, Kathleen, Kaitlyn, and Erin, who are with us today. We all know this is a very difficult time for you. You are welcome to say a few words if you wish, and we certainly understand if you do not.
Thank you. I have a very few words. Thank you for honoring Brian this morning. He was many things, and honorable was definitely one of them. The job he did can require sacrifices, your sleep, your marriage, your sanity, and/or your life. So thank you to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners for recognizing the sacrifice. Thank you to Sheriff Chad Cronister and his team for their support. And to the men and women who put on the belt and vest and head out the door, we thank you.
Thank you. And would you like to say a few words as well, Kaitlyn, or any other member of the family?
No, I think my mom sums everything up pretty well.
Thank you very much. And I really appreciate your video, your courage in providing some history and story of your father in that video. It moved me deeply.
Thank you.
Sheriff Cronister, Sheriff Chad Cronister, has joined us today. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Chair Kemp, Commissioner Smith, and distinguished board, I want to sincerely thank you for this special presentation. And thank you to the Levine family, Kathy, Kaitlyn. I know that you are uneasy with this type of fanfare. I believe I speak for all of Hillsborough, the entire Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office when I say Sergeant Levine was the kind of deputy who was more than deserving of this honor. For more than 30 years, 30 years, he committed his life to protect and in serving our community by keeping drunk drivers off our roads, protecting children in our schools, and answering any call for service that came his way. He was a role model among deputies, and more important than that, he was a role model to his two children, Kaitlyn and Erin. I believe that Sergeant Levine's family, including his wife Kathy, is the best legacy he leaves behind. Throughout this tragedy, I've gotten a chance to get to know them, and I'm extremely grateful for that. I can tell you that, just like the Levesines, all of us at HCSO are still grieving his untimely death, and this pain will not go away anytime soon. We still have a long road ahead of us as we work to ensure that justice is served. But in the meantime, commissioners, this beautiful tribute serves as a bright light in all this darkness. Again, thank you for taking the time to honor our fallen hero.
Thank you, Sheriff Cronister. As part of the Fallen Heroes Program, the county creates an online tribute that celebrates the great sacrifices of these brave public servants. I encourage everybody to visit hillsboroughsfallenheroes.org. That's hillsboroughsfallenheroes.org. It provides information about the program and all of our first responders who gave their lives for their community. It is truly humbling to read their stories of heroism and sacrifice. You can also donate to Sergeant Levine's memorial fund by using the link on his page at that website. And at this point, we will now present a special video in remembrance of Sergeant Levine. The staff will play the video.
He was my dad, and he was my best friend. That's who Brian Levine was.
Brian was a very charismatic person, magnetic, contagious, just wanted to be around the guy.
My mom was his person. They, you could just tell they were meant to be together. She was his high school sweetheart, followed her around, just, you knew they were meant to be together. And then me and my sister were just his pride and joy. He'd take his vacation time to coach soccer for us. He'd spend every weekend with us. He worked midnights for years, 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 passing up promotions just to stay on midnight so that he could be home when we got up, and then he'd be up when we got home from school. But you just knew, everyone knew, everyone knew we were his priority.
I'd say most of us make that mistake. We put this job first. No, he didn't.
Even when I was a kid, I was gonna be like Dad when I grew up. There is no convincing me otherwise, no one even tried. But I wanted to be just like him. I wanted to be an FTO like him. He made street crimes, I wanted to be on Street Crimes too. Whatever he did, I wanted to do. I wanted to, I wanted to, I wanted to do what he did for people. I wanted to make people feel like he made them feel. It's just, there's no words to describe like how much of a good influence he was on people.
Brian was a cop's cop, and he knew how with a recruit to instill the values that they need in the profession. As a person. And as a cop.
He was just so selfless. He was a role model. He had a positive impact on a lot of lives. And there was a lot of love for him, and it was well deserved because he was that good of a person. I think we all kind of lost a little bit of ourselves.
Thank you for that beautiful video tribute. We are very grateful to Sergeant Levine's daughter, Deputy Kaitlyn Levine, and Sergeant Tim Sullivan for telling us about this inspirational man whose life touched so many and whose work will live on as a role model in our Sheriff's Department and in our community. And I hope that the family and friends and all of the sheriffs can feel that this community shares your grief, and I hope that helps you to bear it, and I hope you feel our deep appreciation for the life and service of Sergeant Brian Levine. And at that point, I will turn the ceremony over to Chair Kemp to close and invite other commissioners to speak. Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. And I'm Commissioner Overman. You're recognized.
Thank you, Chair, and I truly appreciate all the words that were spoken, not only from the board and the sheriff, but most importantly, from the family. When an individual steps forward to protect and serve our citizens, they don't come alone. They come with the family. And it sounds as though Sergeant Levine did a wonderful job of balancing his commitment to protect and serve and his commitment to his family as they walked along this protect and serve mission that he stepped so courageously forward. We all have lost a hero, and know more deeply than the family have, but I just want to thank Kathy and Kaitlyn and Erin for sharing him with us, for he served our county well and will always be remembered. And with that, my heart is with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Overman. I think the, we don't have the words, like the family has the words almost, to express the loss we've had. It's obviously a very brilliant light that we've lost here, and so tragically on his last night of service. And I just, I was just struck by the fact that he self-taught himself Spanish to the point that he could become a translator. And I think a dedication like that is obviously such a work of love for others to do that. And so much of his story, as conveyed to us this morning, is just, reflects the love and really his brilliance around, so I'm glad that we are able to know some of that. And I want to thank the Levine family for being here today. It's our privilege to pay our respects to a man who served Hillsborough County with unconditional selflessness. We'll always remember and appreciate his courage, dedication, and sacrifice for many years to come. Our thoughts and prayers are with you all, in addition to all of our first responders as they work each and every day to keep Hillsborough County safe. And we have one other special recognition today. Commissioner Myers, will you now present a proclamation for Black History Month? Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is Ovette Wilson the principal of Dr. Carter G. Woodson PK through 8th Leadership Academy here today?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. African-Americans and their history, tradition, and culture are essential to the foundation and prosperity of the United States. They have made incredible contributions in diverse fields such as science, politics, sports, law, and the arts. Since 1976, Black History Month has served as a tribute to African-Americans honoring their numerous triumphacies and roles in the nation's history. It is my great pleasure to present this proclamation to Mr. Wilson, declaring February 1 through March 1, 2021, as Black History Month. It reads, "Whereas, in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson and the Association for Studies of African-American Life and History sponsored a National Negro History Week, choosing the second week of February to coincide with birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. By the late 1960s, thanks in part to the Civil Rights Movement and a growing awareness of Black identity, the week-long celebration involved into a month-long one on many college campuses, and in 1976, President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month. And whereas, Black History Month is observed annually across the United States in February, it serves as a celebration of African-American achievements, as well as a time to recognize crucial roles they have played in the U.S. history, and to pay tribute to generations of Black Americans who struggled through adversity to achieve full citizenship in our society. And whereas, notable Black Americans, including Harriet Tubman, Rosa Parks, Muhammad Ali, Martin Luther King Jr., Ma Angelou, and Ophelia Remfrey, has made groundbreaking accomplishments and broken countless barriers. And whereas, we celebrate the first. Jackie Robinson became the first African-American to play in Major League Baseball. The late Leanna Shaw Jr. was the state's first African-American Chief Justice. May Jimison was the first African-American woman to travel into space. Peggy Quins was the first African-American woman to serve as the state's Chief Justice. Barack Obama was the first African-American president of the United States. Jennifer King is the first African-American woman NFL Full-Time Assistant Court. Kamala Harris is the first African-American woman Vice President of the United States. And Lord Austin is the first African-American Defense Secretary of the United States. And whereas, the late Clarifile, Queen Miller, the Bean Family, the late George Edgcombe and Dorit Edgcombe, the late C. Blythe Andrews Jr., former State Senator Athena Joyner, Gwendolyn Miller, and Leslie Les Miller Jr., and a multitude of other prominent local Black residents have helped Hillsborough County to flourish. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare February 1 through March 1, 2021, as Black History Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to celebrate and remember countless achievements of Black people whose legacy and positive impact will continue to shine for generations to come. Executed this third day of February 2021, signed by all seven commissioners. Mr. Wilson, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. On behalf of the faculty, staff, parents, students, and our community, we just want to thank you for the recognition. It's very important. I know Dr. Carter G. Woodson, one of the things that was so profound is his work with history. You know, he said, "History plus culture equal our value system," and it was very important for him. So thank you.
And I guess, Commissioner Overman, is your hand up as well for this? Yes, you're recognized.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. And Commissioner Myers, thank you so much for helping us remember all of the wonderful folks that locally have done such a terrific job of showing leadership, but also nationally. You know, we've made a lot of progress, and we still have a lot of work to do to really celebrate the history of the wonderful contributions that are made to our communities and to our nation. Carrie Meeks was the first Black woman to be elected in Florida to this Florida Senate. But that wasn't until 1982 through 1992. We have had some amazing Black leaders in the state of Florida that have done a fabulous job. And I am so thankful that you've brought this forward and give us a chance to really share with everyone we know all month long, the amazing citizens that have done a great job of not only bringing great things to our communities, but also taking a lead and speaking about the wonderful things that our community is blessed by within the Black community. And thank you so much.
Thank you. And I want to thank you too, Commissioner Myers, for bringing forward that recognition for Black History Month and having us thinking about so many people whose shoulders we all stand on for making this country and this community a more prosperous and wonderful place to be. I also want to thank Ovette Wilson and everyone else for joining us today and for everything that they do to make Hillsborough County a great place to live and work. And finally, before we move on, I'd just like to recognize today in the U.S. Capitol, in a rare time that U.S. Capitol police man as officer is laid out in the U.S. Capitol, Brian Sicknick, and just like to express our condolences as well, or our thoughts for him this morning. And with that, we'll just move to approval of changes to the agenda. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item that is deleted from the agenda, that's Item A29. We have Item A42, which is deferred to February 17, which is a budget amendment for the Department of Juvenile Justice. At 10:00 a.m., Item D1 is a public hearing to amend Chapter 106 of the Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances and Laws, eliminating the authorization to establish impact fee assessment units for the payment of water and wastewater impact fees. Item D2 at 10:00 a.m. is a public hearing to amend Chapter 102 of the Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances and Laws, which will eliminate the option for developers and builders to choose the impact fee assessment unit program to pay a portion of the impact fees over time. Item D3 at 10:00 a.m. is the second of two required public hearings for school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Polte Home Company for the Girl Scout Camp Project. Item D4 at 10:00 a.m. is the second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement. school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board and Franklin Development Corp. for the Bougainvillea Town Homes. Item D5 at 10:00 a.m. is to conduct the first of two required public hearings for school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board and Homes by West Bay LLC for the Hinton Hawkstone subdivision. Item E1 at 10:15 is the emergency management operations related to COVID-19 and the local state of emergency. At 10:45, Item F2 is Commissioner Cohen's item to rename 419 North Pier Street for the Honorable Pat Frank. Item B2 at 11:00 a.m. is to accept the code violations process audit report performed by the County Internal Auditor's Office. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion to move the changes. Commissioner White, seconded by...
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Overman. And seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move now to public comments. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing the online public comment form found at hillsboroughcounty.org/speakup. You'll be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The Chair will call on speakers by name in order in which they have completed the online public comment form. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis. An audio call-in number will be provided to participants that have completed the form after it's received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly. And with that, we will move to our first public comment. I have Sandy Council. Ms. Council, is Ms. Council present?
Ms. Council has not checked in. Commissioner?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing what you responded.
I'm sorry, Ms. Council, Ms. Council has not checked in.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move to the next speaker, Noel Lacor.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to speak on Agenda Items B1 and F1. B1, it's heartbreaking watching my neighbors be kicked out of their homes, some are renters and some are homeowners. A renter on my street was forced out after the home she was renting was foreclosed on and auctioned off in December. She was informed by an unknown man in a Ferrari that the house had been sold and that she needed to move out in two weeks. She immediately called her landlord, who did not answer and still has not returned her calls, which also means she probably won't be getting her deposit back. She was never late with a rent payment. She had to sell a lot of her possessions to raise money to help pay for moving expenses and to secure another house. This is not right. No one should be treated like that. Our residents deserve better. Please support directing the county attorney's office to draft a renter's bill of rights, and if possible, have some outreach to stakeholders as it's being developed. Also, please consider doing something for homeowners as well. Another neighbor of mine who is current on her mortgage was evicted for a HOA lien worth $1,407. From lien foreclosure, it only took about six months and was signed off by the developer, not the HOA Board, which is illegal. The single mother of nine lost her home on a Zoom court hearing that she didn't even have the link for. Five homes have been foreclosed on my neighborhood since COVID hit, and there are about eight more in the pipeline. Agenda Item F1, the Planning Commission desperately needs someone from the South Hillsborough County area, and visiting Handy is that person. She would make a great asset to the Planning Commission. Please keep that in mind today as you all vote to appoint a new Planning Commissioner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lacor. We'll move now to Tina Swain. Is Tina Swain present virtually?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. You're recognized.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Swain.
Great. My name is Tina Swain. Okay, I'm with Habitat for Humanity of Hillsborough County. Nearly one-third of Black renters pay more than half of their income on housing, which is higher than any other racial or ethnic group, which leaves little in the budget for food, healthcare, transportation, or saving. In 2020, Brookings released data that indicated that the net worth of a typical white family is nearly 10 times greater than that of the net worth of a typical Black family. As a result, Black parents have dramatically less wealth, assets, and economic security to pass on to their children, driving economic, educational, and housing disparities for the next generation as well. Not very long ago, I provided the Commission with some data that showcased how Habitat for Humanity is shrinking the wealth gap in our county through the mechanism of affordable homeownership. As Habitat continues to grow, our partnership with local government is important, and that's why I'm here. I wanted to let you know that the rising cost of land and building costs, having some ongoing solutions that are more efficient, will allow affordable homeownership to grow in capacity and have greater impact on the wealth gap that we see in our community. And I just wanted to offer a potential solution that would not require the arduous RFP process that's followed by contracts and environmental reviews, and then HUD reviews, and the many signatures and approvals that have to take place, which are all necessary, given the level of funding that comes from the RFP process, but it does take up significant time. So, one solution could be a more robust down payment assistance program. The current program, it's appreciated, but access to it is restrictive, and per-unit funding is insignificant, given the rising cost of land and materials. County personnel already have the experience implementing such programs and could do so with the allocation of HOPE or SHIP funds. The City of Tampa already has such a program that funds at $30,000 per unit for eligible applicants. And Habitat Hillsborough successfully partners with the city to provide families access to that assistance so that their mortgage payments are affordable. We're all aware of the policies that cause disparities in homeownership, and I believe we've all taken steps to try to correct the mistakes, but we're not finished. And we see the gap of 30% in homeownership rates between white and Black families, and it's clear that homeownership is a significant contributor to the wealth gap. Hom homeownership continues to be a primary mechanism that American families use to build wealth. And so allocating funding to a robust down payment assistance program locally will assist families obtain affordable monthly payments. And though we cannot erase the policy mistakes in the past that caused some of these disparities in homeownership, we can take responsibility in the present. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And I'll recognize Susan Nicely. Has she checked in virtually? Is she there?
Susan, go ahead. Can you hear us?
Thank you. This is Susan Nicely. I have been a long-term resident of Hillsborough County for 40-plus years and attended the last Commission meeting. Very concerned about the discussion about the ferry. First of all, just the general cost of it in general, and then the fact that you think it's going to be a solution for McGill Air Force Base when there's not a good infrastructure there, once the ferry docks and people need to get to work, the weather that we have here in the summer. I really think there are other viable solutions, the fact that we've allowed South Tampa to be very much so overbuilt. And I'd like for you to either get public comment before pursuing this further and look at other solutions like repairing the roads. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. And has Ms. Council joined us at this time, or is there anyone else for public comment?
I believe that's all for general public comment.
Thank you. We'll move now to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the...
Second.
Move approval.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Cohen, to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And now we will move to our regular agenda. Ms. Wise, County Administrator.
Thank you. We have a few minutes before 10 o'clock public hearing, so we will move to the regular agenda. The first item is Item B1, which is regarding a renter's bill of rights, which Commissioner Overman asked us to bring back to you. Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing Director, is here to present that item.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing Services. On January 6th, the Board directed appropriate staff and the county attorney's office to work with appropriate agencies to bring back to the February 3rd meeting a renter's bill of rights. After some research, I found that a tremendous amount of focus on keeping families stably housed and access to housing for families is occurring at the federal, state, and even in the private sector. At the federal level, the Neighborhood Investment Act is proposed to help address the impact of the loss of income by landlords while simultaneously working to support the stabilization of families to ensure fair access to housing. This act also requires research to be completed on the impacts of evictions for families, and there's also an extension of an eviction moratorium included in this act to prevent the onslaught of evictions. At the state level, there are currently two proposed bills by the Senate that will enhance the renter's bill of rights. Senate Bill 412 would provide consistency and legal enforcement to prevent or reduce foreclosures by requiring an independent mediator between landlords and tenants before eviction papers are processed. Senate Bill 926 would seal the records of anyone convicted from their home due to COVID-related issues such as loss of a job or reduced income, and help to position the family to have better access to decent housing as they recover from the pandemic. And as I said previously, even the private sector has gotten involved on ensuring that families remain stably housed. Zillow has expanded its local legal protections tool to include source of income protections data on all rental listings. This action will allow users to identify whether rental listings lie in a jurisdiction with the local source of income protections that prohibit landlord discrimination against prospective tenants based on their source of income, including the housing choice voucher or what's commonly known as Section 8. And today's recommendation to the Board, we're asking, A, to approve the Affordable Housing Services Department recommendations to, one, adopt a renter's bill of rights requiring landlords to provide a notice to tenants of their housing rights and identifying resources for tenant assistance; and, two, consider the option of adding a provision to the renter's bill of rights prohibiting landlords from discriminating against prospective tenants on the basis of lawful source of income, including Section 8 vouchers; and, B, direct the county attorney's office to draft an ordinance adopting a renter's bill of rights, which, one, requires landlords to provide a notice to tenants of their housing rights and identifying resources for tenant assistance; and, two, prohibit the landlords from discriminating against prospective tenants on the basis of lawful source of income, including Section 8 vouchers; and, B, direct the county attorney's office to draft an ordinance adopting a renter's bill of rights, which, one, requires landlords to provide a notice to tenants of their housing rights and identifying resources for tenant assistance, and/or, two, prohibit the landlords from discriminating against prospective tenants on the basis of lawful source of income, including Section 8 vouchers. Now, please note, the creation of this ordinance will not have a fiscal impact, but the enforcement of the ordinance will require additional action that could have a fiscal impact to carry out activities such as educating tenants and landlords, creating and managing a hotline, and inspectors and monitors of the program to respond to citizen and landlord inquiries or complaints.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. And I see Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Ms. Howell, and Ms. Beck, and their teams for bringing these recommendations to us on a timely fashion. This is a step we should take to bring equity into the non-homeowning residents within the county. I brought this item forward as many residents have faced eviction due to the economic fallout of the pandemic and are feeling the financial pain at no, you know, no cause of their own. We saw the numbers of individuals in trouble when we opened up the first R3 program. The phones were inundated, and our emails were swamped with pleas for help. I'm looking forward to the discussion on the recommendations brought forward by the Affordable Housing Services Department, and to hear everyone's thoughts about how we help our citizens maintain their stable housing, which is so critical foundation to the success of our communities. It is important that we move with some expediency as well, because we have yet to see the ramifications of the many months of people being put out of work or having reduced hours due to the pandemic. If we can have this in place, many, many more may be educated as to their rights when the landlords begin the eviction process. Other communities have taken similar actions, as we've heard, and I think we all know that there are many renters who may not know their rights under the Florida Resident Landlord-Tenant Act or the Federal Fair Housing Act. Having a renter's bill in our county, a bill of rights in our county, will clarify both for landlords and tenants what the terms of agreements are and how to allow them to work effectively together in order to avoid the legal disputes, appearances in court, or potentially homelessness. And with that, I'd like to say that the motion is exactly as it appears in the backup. So, I'm going to direct the county, I'd like to make a motion to direct the county attorney's office to draft an ordinance to be presented at our next regular board meeting for adoption of the renter's bill of rights requiring landlords to provide a notice to tenants of their housing rights and identify sources for tenant assistance landlords, including a provision to the renter's bill of rights prohibiting landlords from discriminating against prospective tenants on the basis of lawful sources of income, including Section 8 vouchers.
Second.
Second. Thank you. And we have many seconds, I think. So, we have Commissioner Overman, and I heard Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Smith seconding, and I might have heard someone else. And we'll move to Commissioner Hagan. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first of all thank Commissioner Overman for initiating this program. I also believe it's important to bring equity to our non-homeowners. It's also very important to ensure compliance and accountability. We have a vendor that manages our vacant, abandoned, and foreclosure registry, and I'm wondering if there's any value in the services that they are already providing to the county, and if that could potentially strengthen the program that's going to come back in front of us. So, I guess I just have a question to Bonnie. Do you know how that would work, or have you looked into that, or do you have any suggestions on that?
I think, Commissioner, that that could be an option. We would like to have the opportunity to look at that. That could enhance the program.
Is that something that requires a motion, or can you just do that and bring it back for us to consider? I'm happy to do it if necessary, but...
We could look into that and bring it back when we bring back the item.
Sounds good. Thanks.
And Commissioner Smith, I thought I saw your name up first, even though I don't know your name.
Yes, and...
You're recognized.
Thank you. And I really appreciate staff of Affordable Housing Department and our attorneys for bringing this forward with all these pieces. I think there's a lot of very important parts to this, and I'm happy to see it moving forward completely with all of these. I won't go into much discussion...
I won't go into much discussion at this time, except for to say that I think the full motion, as it is here in the agenda, and that Commissioner Overman read, is very important to bring back to us. So with that, I'll support the motion unless there's further discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you. And first of all, just to reiterate, thank you to Commissioner Overman and to Cheryl and the staff for this. It's obviously very important and very timely. What I, I've done before being elected to this Board quite a bit of work in this area. And one of the things that I would like to make sure is that we have some input into some of the language that's actually used in the Renters' Bill of Rights itself, and that when the ordinance comes back, hopefully, we've had a chance. I guess this is really a question for the County Attorney, whether or not there'll be an opportunity for Board members to have input into the specific language that's used in the ordinance, or if that will have to wait until the meeting itself.
Yes, Commissioner, Christine Beck, County Attorney. If we're bringing it back at the very next meeting, that is a fairly tight timeline, and we can distribute it in advance, but I think the deadline is Friday to get something on the agenda, so we'll do our best, though, to share it with Commissioners in advance and get any input. There's also the opportunity at the actual board meeting to make your changes, or tweaks, or preferred language that we can incorporate before we advertise it for the public hearing.
I have no doubt that the product that comes forth is going to be close to perfect, but I just want to, I just want to make sure we have the opportunity to tweak the language, because oftentimes, you know, words have very specific meanings in this particular area, and it's very, very important that the information that we provide is not just correct, but it really helps people to understand their rights in language that makes sense and is applicable to their situation. And clarity, I think, is of paramount importance. But again, I look forward to supporting this and look forward to having input into the, into the language that we ultimately come up with.
Yes, understood.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to offer a substitute motion to allow us time enough to have some input, and I do agree with Commissioner Cohen. So if this item can come back to us at the first board meeting in March, to allow the Board to have some input to share in the information of the Bill of Rights, it cannot come at a perfect time. We all know that many of our citizens, in particular those who are underserved, always complain about their vouchers and not being able to have a landlord to accept their vouchers, so having input into the Bill of Rights as we move forward would be very helpful. So I'm asking if we could bring this back at the first board meeting in March.
So I think properly, that's an amendment truly to the motion, rather than a substitute. So...
I'll second that motion or amend.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a substitute, I'm sorry, an amendment by Commissioner Myers, and motion, and seconded by Commissioner White. Is there any further discussion at this moment on the amendment about the date? I know there's several hands still up, but can anyone maybe?
I actually have my hand up for two reasons, and one of it does address the amendment, but also addresses...
Okay, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. First of all, to the amendment, there is, there is a significant amount of draft language already present, and I would like to make sure that we do this in a timely fashion. We see people being evicted every day. And believe it or not, two weeks will matter to a lot of people. So I would suggest that if there's at all possible to accommodate those Commissioners that have a real desire or a background, to offer County Attorney's Staff to, who have agreed that they will meet with you to bring, you have to speak with any draft language we already have, and to take input on anything that's presented. And as was said, you know, if there's pieces that we're missing between now and the 17th, that can always be accommodated at that time. But, so I hope that we'll consider keeping the original date. But that being said, I want to thank Commissioner Hagan for bringing up the item associated with the registry. As we saw during the early stages of the pandemic, when we were managing the R-3 program for rental assistance, one of the largest challenges we came across was connecting the tenants, the landlords, our services, and the clerk with, you know, who and where the funds were needing to go, what the tenant, you know, what the tenant's lease was about, and all those items. A registry would assist us in clarifying and being able to effectively see where we have tenants that are renting from individual homeowners, and that does only apply to individual single-family homes. It does not apply due to the regulation of apartment complexes, because that is regulated by, under a different, under the business regulations, and by the one code enforcement officer that's from the state versus the many that we have here locally. So if that's brought back as part of the presentation to address this item, I want to, one, say thank you for doing that, because it's going to help facilitate us being able to assist in programs that help keep people stable. And it also helps us stay in contact with landlords when rules change or things come up that would impact their ability to keep their tenants safe and sound and stable. So I, but I would like to suggest, if at all possible, we could keep the 17th date.
Okay. Is there any further discussion as to the amendment? And I see Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Myers look like they still have their hands up. So Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, yes. You know, I hear what Commissioner Overman is saying about the urgency of the need, but I also feel that there are groups in our community who are very engaged and knowledgeable about the needs of affordable housing. And so I'm thinking that they're, well, I know that some of them are just now becoming aware of this issue, and as well as the citizens who might be most affected. And so I guess I'd like to ask Commissioner Myers if you think that that is what an additional two weeks is needed for?
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The additional two weeks is needed to allow our staff time enough to put together the ordinance and have input from the Board for those Commissioners who would like to participate in the process. And so when we rush to put the ordinance in place, and I just heard Commissioner Overman said, "Well, we can come back and change." Well, if we're just putting something in place, we shouldn't have to come back and change. Let's take the time to get everything that we want in the Bill of Rights the very first time, and to allow our staff the opportunity to present something to us that we can have a dialogue with on the Bill of Rights. So that's why I'm requesting that, asking for this item to come back to us the first board meeting in March.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Overman, do you have your hand raised again?
I do. I'd like to ask the County Attorneys to clarify the process of this, so there's clarity on what we would do on the 17th versus the first, and what the process after that for adopting the ordinance. I think that might be helpful.
Yes, Commissioner. The normal process is that once we have been directed by the Board to draft something, which would be your action potentially that you're taking today, we would draft it, bring it back with a recommendation to set it for a public hearing, usually at the following meeting, and that draft that is attached is the opportunity to see what we would be advertising. And so, you know, with something like this, I understand from Commissioner Smith, there may be other stakeholders that we would have to reach out to as well, to make sure that you're not hearing at the public comment issues for the first time, and to have it really be vetted well. So the normal process, just to summarize, would be to bring it back on whatever date you choose to set the public hearing, and then the following board meeting would be the public hearing, and it would be enacted into law if it was passed. If it's, if it's the 17th, it would be potentially a public hearing on the 3rd. If it's the 3rd, it would potentially be a public hearing at the next meeting.
And is that, do you have your questions answered? Commissioner Overman?
Yes, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Okay. And I see more hands up here. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized. I'm sorry, that was from before, I suppose. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would normally support the amendment for additional time. However, in hearing from the County Attorney, it's clear that we're following our normal process, and the important, the critical thing is having the language right when we have the actual public hearing on the ordinance. So I think in two weeks, it comes back to us. At that time, if we feel that we need additional time, we can always schedule the public hearing two meetings out to give us more time to do that. So I think we still have time to decide to continue when it comes back, and we have something to actually start to look at and digest. So based on that, and I typically defer to the Commissioner who initiates the item. So I'm comfortable with going with the next meeting, and we can still kick it back a meeting or two at that point if we feel we need additional time.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
I was going to say exactly what Commissioner Hagan just said, that, you know, we have two more bites at this apple, so I'm comfortable with the original motion.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers, I don't know that the votes are there, but I'm going to leave my second on the floor, and I'm going to vote with you if the motion remains on the floor. And it sounds like Commissioner Cohen has some similar concerns about getting that language right as well. So, you know, I'm sensitive to the fact that a couple of weeks can make a big difference for some folks, but I'm also sensitive to the fact that spending a couple of extra weeks just to make sure that we get everything just right in this document is of critical importance as well. So again, Commissioner Myers, I'm not so sure the votes are there, but I'm going to leave that second on the floor and vote with you if this goes up for a vote.
And are there any other Commissioners that want to comment as to the amendment to bring this back a little bit later? Seeing no further comments, I'll just say I have concerns either way. And I understand, especially Commissioner Cohen, when you describe some of the, I think, I think sometimes it comes too much in a wrapped package, and we don't have enough time to process, and then we have, you know, as a group, since we are in sunshine and can't kind of work these things out in any other way, it's difficult to sometimes really get some, a chance to review things and express, as a process is going on. But I will take this vote now on the amendment. I don't see any further. Commissioner Myers, you have a comment?
I hear in all the comments that have just been said about the Commissioners that we can vote either way, but at the same time, we're also saying we need to allow the staff the time so that we can have input for reviewing. So to me, let's allow the staff to bring something back to us on March, the very first meeting, I don't know what date that is, but the board meeting in March, to go ahead and take the necessary time to get it right the very first time. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And hearing no further discussion, I don't believe, can we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Kemp.
No.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
No.
Myers. Commissioner Myers.
I hear you. No.
Overman.
No.
Smith.
No.
White.
Yes.
Excuse me, Commissioner Myers, I just wanted to...
I should, yes, on my vote, sorry.
Yes, okay.
She'll change her.
I will add that. All right. Motion failed. Three to four with Commissioners Kemp, Hagan, Overman, and Smith voting no.
So this puts some pressure on the drafting here, but maybe we can at least be cognizant that many Board members, I think, would like to see something sooner than later that they could maybe get a little feedback into. And with that, we'll move the main motion as to the Affordable Housing or Renters' Bill of Rights, and that was a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioners Cohen and Smith. And do we have further discussion on that? Commissioner Myers, is your hand up for discussion on the main motion? Okay. And is there anyone else who's, I don't see any other hands up, so seeing none. I'll just say, I'll just say this before we go on. Thank you, Commissioner Overman, for bringing this forward. Thank you, Ms. Howell. I think there was a lot of consideration put into this and work, and I appreciate that, and it's, it will be a good thing to have brought forward in Hillsborough County. So with that, if we can have a roll call, please.
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes, and thank you.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. It's now after 10:00, so we can go to our public hearings. The first one is Item D1, which is a public hearing regarding the impact fee assessment units. Hank Ennis from the County Attorney's Office will lead us through this item.
Commissioners, this is a public hearing to consider amendments to Chapter 106 of the Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances and Laws, which will eliminate the authorization of the Board to establish impact fee assessment units for the payment of water and wastewater impact fees over a period of time. This was done at the direction of the Board to sunset the program. Further, this ordinance amendment will allow the Board to consider the very last impact fee assessment unit at the February 17th board meeting. The Board directed that no new applications for impact fee assessment units be accepted after December 16th. The Board already approved the initial assessment resolution for that last group, and as I said, on February 17th, you'll have the option to consider whether or not to create the last one on February 17th. And Commissioners, this is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, and I see that we have one person, I assume is still virtually checked in for this item, D1. Ms. Lecore, Noel Lecore, you're recognized.
Good morning. My name is Noel Lecore, and I'm here to speak on Item D1. The IFAU program allows developers to get away with not paying water and wastewater impact fees upfront. Instead, they are paid by the homeowner over a 20-year period via the homeowner's yearly property tax, and includes fees and interest totaling 12%. It is programs such as this that are in part to blame for the county's inadequate infrastructure. Hillsborough County needs that money now, not later. The county is quickly running out of water, especially in... in South Hillsborough County. There's low flow issues, water restrictions, water and wastewater rate increases. Enough is enough. Please vote yes to eliminate this unnecessary and harmful program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And do we have anyone else virtually for this item? Hearing, I assume that we have no one else?
Thank you.
I'll-
That's everyone, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing, and we can have a board discussion, and I'll recognize Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to have a point of privilege as relating to this item. As it relates to our board members, Commissioner Cohen and myself added to new board members. And with the social media that was displayed over the weekend, asking the citizens to contact us, that we had the three votes, but the two new commissioners, we needed their input and their votes to make this pass. For me, it puts me in a very unlikable situation because my office, we received over 79 emails in reference to this. And I think it's very unprofessional and unethical for a sitting county commissioner to use social media for the citizens to contact us, which possibly could lead to hate mail or just attack if you're out in public. This is not the first time that this issue has happened. This is the second time. And so, I would ask, as a board member, we could disagree, majority rules, but we don't have to sell and tell the public the two commissioners that you need to vote on a particular item. Accept the will of the vote. If you cannot have it at this time, you might want to bring it up later, but there's no need to single out two commissioners, two new commissioners on a particular item that the previous board was not able to pass. And so, I wanted to state this for the record. It is not a good situation to be in and then comments via social media. So, thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized?
Well, thank you. I am surprised to hear the comments of my colleague on the board because I'm sure she's referring to my social media post informing citizens and residents about this issue that was going to come before the board today. I have discussed this issue in public, in groups and meetings and on social media. As I did this time, I, I do not recall mentioning any commissioners by name or singling anyone out, except to report the fact of the matter is that this issue has been supported in the past by Commissioner Kemp and Overman and myself. The reason I mentioned that was to, honestly, to not be taking credit for being the champion, the sole champion of this issue, when I know my fellow commissioners have done a lot of work on it over the years. And so, I was reporting that the other commissioners have worked on this alongside me, and, and so I wouldn't be taking the only credit. I did not name any other commissioners, but simply to report the history on the issue. I am out in the community, a couple of community meetings this week, a couple last week. I am discussing issues that come before the board and reporting on the public record of, of how the votes went and whether we won or lost and what my views on the issues are. I'm reporting that in public. I'm reporting that in virtual meetings. I'm reporting that and discussing that with my constituents on social media and, and in email and on the phone. And I do not intend to stop discussing matters that are going to be before the board or issues that concern our community in any way, shape, or form. I am sorry if, in any way, you took this personally, or you didn't like getting the email that you got, but I'm quite sure I haven't seen any hate mail and, and certainly I haven't and would never instigate any hate mail. So, I, I think you go too far, Commissioner Myers, in your criticism of public servants discussing current issues with our constituents in public. I am surprised how much email came in on this issue and, and how it got shared on social media, because I considered it one of the wonkier issues that I've worked on. And I'm surprised that people really got it and understood the ramifications of it. I was also interviewed on Bay News 9 about it, because it's an important issue. And I'm gonna speak out on important issues and say my piece, and, and as we are all welcome to do, in the paper, in the news, and on social media. Some of those emails that came in, I was, I was moved by. And, and they might not have been aware of, that this was the inflection point, to mail their county commissioners what their experiences are. We got email because the word was out that we are going to be considering this. Not everybody is checking our agenda on the Hillsborough County website, all right? They depend on their public servants to inform them. And because I informed them that this issue was coming before the board, we got several emails telling the personal stories of people who personally recently bought a home and then were surprised to find this additional fee put on their tax bill. It was not explained to them during that mountain of files that new homeowners and home buyers are asked to sign at closing. And because I got the word out to the community, they were able to tell you and the other commissioners how this impacts them directly. It is time to end the impact fee assessment unit program. So, developers will pay their water and wastewater impact fees themselves instead of putting it on the home buyer's tax bill in this yearly assessment. The impact fee assessment unit program has been allowing developers to make the home buyer pay the developers water impact fee, not upfront in the cost of the home where you understand what is being added, but in this kind of sneaky, sneaky way, a, a way that home buyers are unaware of in many cases, that gets an extra fee added to their property tax bill, plus interest, plus collection fees, plus an early payment fee, all adding up to 12% in, in interest and fees. And in those, in, and the home buyer has to pay it in payments stretching over 20 years. And, and this makes the home buyer pay nearly twice what the developer's impact fee actually is. And meanwhile, the county has to wait 20 years to get the full payment. It's a bad deal for the county and a bad deal for the home buyer. And, as I said, I'm not the only one who has been pressing to eliminate this corporate welfare program for some time. And with that, I will move the item. I'll move to amend our Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances and Laws to eliminate the authorization of the Board of County Commissioners to establish impact fee assessment units. Second. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Overman. And Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, I just want to briefly address the, the issue of social media and then talk to the merits of this item. I think the difficulty with social media is that it's certainly appropriate for us if we go out and report on the public record, if we talk about what votes are being taken, what issues we're advocating for. The difficulty is that other people comment on that social media, and once that dialogue starts, we are not able, because of the Sunshine Law, to participate in it and give our side of the story. In, in, in my case, I, I know the, what Commissioner Myers is referring to from the weekend, and what, what I would have liked to have been able to say was, actually, on December 16th, we voted six to, six to one to discontinue accepting applications, and, and therefore, I was signaling to whoever was paying attention, to my fellow commissioners, to the public, that I was going to support the elimination of this program, and that is indeed how I'm going to vote today. But I do think that when it comes to social media, it's important to remember that a board member can, can get into a, to a dialogue with their constituents, but when other board members get mentioned or, or characterized, or our views are characterized, not necessarily by the poster, but by someone who comments on it perhaps six threads down, we are, we are not able to, we are not able to, to respond to that under the law. And, and so, you know, it, social media is, I think, a very, very difficult medium to deal with, given the, the constraints that are placed on us under the law. And, and I, I hope that, that this episode might just guide us in terms of making sure that when we are on social media, we don't create a situation where our fellow commissioners are being attacked and are unable to defend themselves, or even just explain how it is that we plan to vote. That being said, I am going to be supporting this item. I think it is sound public policy to terminate this program, and I'll vote yes on the motion.
Thank you. And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized?
Thank you. Thank goodness this is coming forward. Oh, my gosh. We've been waiting for this for like a year. And we've been talking about it for two, I think. It is critically important that we, that we move forward on this issue, that we recognize the financially disadvantaged setup of this program as it pertains to the consumer of a home, the challenges with information, as we've seen not only on social media, but also in a closing, and then the additional costs associated with passing the process on to the homeowner. It has been discussed at length. If we go back through the minutes, you'll find plenty of material where we've gone through the analysis of explaining how this isn't in our citizens' and home buyers' best interest. So, I will definitely move forward on both items. I'm glad to see this move forward. And I'm, I'm hoping that we can move forward in making sure that when people purchase a home, that a home developer and builder has, has prepared for them, that they understand that what they're paying for. And this is a great way of making sure it's clear. Thank you. I'll stop there.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else making comments. And so, I'll just speak first to the social media, because I do use it quite a bit. And I think it's a really good tool for educating people. And they're looking to Facebook to find out about issues and to understand them and to get more information about them. So, I think it's a really, really valuable tool, an important tool. And I can understand that, and I haven't seen myself nor any other commissioner do any kind of attacks, rather than just, in the past, it's been sometimes what a vote was. And I know, in, in this case, it was the fact that in the past, there had been three votes for this. And that's something that I saw in the posting, and I think that that's, that's good to know. I actually really appreciate all the engagement it generates by the public and the emails. And, you know, there's been a tradition here of, in the past, too, of some commissioners having weekly or monthly newsletters. That's another way. But, you know, a lot of the, a lot of those, there's a different group of people that get informed that way. But I think every tool we have to reach out is appropriate and, and well-taken, as long as there's no, I would deplore if there was ever any kind of personal attacks on anyone. And, you know, sometimes that shows up on some people's pages. And I tend to try to, well, if it's, we're actually barred from, you know, we're supposed, if there are constituents, to let them express their opinions. And sometimes people attack me in those posts that I put up. So, and those aren't deleted unless there's something obscene or offensive in them. That's just, sits there on the page. So, I can appreciate also your comments with regards to kind of how the analysis you did, Commissioner Cohen, of kind of the way it lays down. I don't know what to do about that, but in terms of how it's, it works and how we work with Sunshine. But I think it's a point well-taken in terms of what you stated, Commissioner Cohen. And, but I do think it's an excellent tool for information, and I appreciate that it generates emails, because, for instance, what if everybody was against something that was posted and they could send you their stories that way? I mean, I just, you know, it's out there and it's a really good tool. And I think it's, there's a whole lot more information that gets to the public and a whole lot more understanding than happened, for instance, when I was here as an aide to Commissioner Castor in 2003 to 2006, and you didn't have that. It's really, a really good tool for helping people understand and, become engaged and involved, and with many times very strong opinions that they have. And so, I was also surprised by all the email it generated. I, I want to thank Commissioner Smith for dogging this issue and bringing it back. I think I first brought this to the board's attention some two years ago. And just for the record, I would like to, from my exploring this, there's not one other county in the entire state of Florida, and probably not the nation, that uses this program where they put the wastewater and water impact fees on the tax bill. It's not done in Tampa, Plant City, or Temple Terrace. It is a outlier of an outlier, and it's caused huge problems in every way for tracking, for costs. It's an unfair burden. It's unfair to consumers. I just, yesterday, heard a story, and it's not the first one I've heard, about a woman who was buying a home and went to the closing, and they threw the, you know, $4,000 on the closing costs, and she wasn't expecting it and couldn't pay it, and the deal fell through. And she was very excited about buying the home, but that was the, that was it. They took that and they shifted the burden totally on the new homeowner at closing. And I, that's not the first time I've heard that being done. So, we really need to change this. We have lost hundreds of millions of dollars in some of this and some, some of our other lack of raising our wastewater and water impact fees, which were doubled recently, but only because they hadn't been properly assessed for years, and the other wastewater and water fees we've had. So, this is a, a step in the right direction, and it's a, something we very much needed to do in order to support actually providing water and wastewater to the residents of our counties. So, I will be supporting this, and I don't think that there, did Commissioner White, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up before. You're recognized? You're recognized.
Yeah, I was late in raising my hand, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I too am on social media, but that I can understand the concerns of Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Cohen. I have always made it a point to rise above asking that my colleagues be pressured or lobbied on social media. I think that a certain level of decorum should be maintained with this body, and I've always made it a point to leave the lobbying up to activists and professional lobbyists. So I think it's a great tool, you know, for disseminating information and communicating with your constituents, but I, for one, am always incredibly careful to not cross that line in asking for pressure or lobbying. I've always made it a point to state my case and try to earn the votes on the issues that I'm interested in here in this boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Myers, do you have your hand up again, or is it just from before? Thank you. Okay, so seeing no further discussion at this time, we will move to a roll call vote on D1.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item D2, which is also a public hearing. This is amending Chapter 102. Hank Ennis will present this item.
Commissioners, this is a public hearing to consider amendments to Chapter 102 of the Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances and Laws. This is the Public Utility Connection Regulations, and it will eliminate the option for developers and builders to choose the Impact Fee Assessment Unit program to pay their impact fees over time. The ordinance amendment further allows the Board of County Commissioners to consider the creation of the last Impact Fee Assessment Unit on February 17th for those applications which were submitted before December 16th, 2020. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and we have one speaker on D2, Ms. Noel Lacour. Ms. Lacour, are you present? Virtually?
Yes, I am still here. But I'm not even going to waste y'all's time. I just would like my comment from D1 to be incorporated into the hearing for D2. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other, seeing no other public comments at this time? Is there another public comment? Okay. We have Commissioner Smith moving approval. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Overman. And I don't know, Commissioner Myers, I think, I used to have trouble getting my hand down now, but I don't want to miss you. Okay, thank you. And I don't think I see any other hands up, so seeing no further discussion at this time, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Myers, what were you saying?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right. Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
And we will move to the next item, but not, I am very happy that these items passed. I'd just like to thank the board. And with that, Commissioner, Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is Item D3, which is the second of two required public hearings for school concurrency mitigation proportionate share mitigation agreement. Adam Gormley will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley with Development Services. Item D3 is the second of two required public hearings to consider adoption of a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst the county, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Pulte Home Company LLC. This agreement is for the Girl Scout Camp sub, proposed subdivision consisting of 99 single-family detached units. The agreement calls for a payment of $250,983 to fund the construction of nine middle school student station seats that would be constructed at the water set PK through eight UU school. This is a public hearing. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and we have D3. I have Jason Ambrose. Is Jason Ambrose available virtually?
Yes, I was hoping to not be the first one to speak on this topic. Is there anyone else, and then maybe I can comment afterwards?
I have, I'm sorry, Kami Corbett? Is Kami Corbett available virtually?
Yes, Chairwoman. This is Kami Corbett representing Pulte Homes. I'm the applicant, and I would ask that if there are members of the public that are going to be speaking after me, that I have an opportunity to respond to whatever they may have to say. I know this is typically, people go in the order in which they're called. I represent Pulte Homes. I will reiterate what I said at the last hearing. This agreement does not approve any additional development over and above what was previously approved on the northernmost 30 acres of the Camp Dorothy Thomas Girl Scout Camp property. The agreement that's before you this morning is consistent with the well-established procedures and processes to satisfy school concurrency, and accordingly, I respectfully request your approval this morning, and again, would like to reserve any time to rebut any testimony by the members of the public.
And I'll recognize Laura Webb. Is Laura Webb checked in virtually?
Good morning. This is Laura Webb. I'm the Chair of the Board of the Girl Scouts of West Central Florida, and I just want to confirm as well that we support the school board that approved the agreement for this issue that we're discussing today, but obviously, our camp is very important to us, and this is something that we take into consideration when working with Pulte Homes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll recognize Jason, Mr. Ambrose?
Thank you. So I'm not sure this is entirely the proper forum for why I joined the call. I'm a homeowner in the Sand Hill Ridge community that's within 200 feet of the neighborhood that's going to be developed, and my main concern is the tree line in our backyard as we have a wrought iron fence and four sliders on the back of our home, so it would really leave us very exposed to any new developments that are built behind us. I just recently bought this home. It was a new Cardell home I purchased in 2019 for me and my family, and, I mean, there's trees on the signs in our neighborhood, there's trees on the gate to get in our neighborhood. When we built our neighborhood, and there was existing homes on the other side of the neighborhood, I guess that would be the east side of the neighborhood, there was a tree line that was left to leave a little bit level of privacy for those existing homeowners. I had a similar problem at my previous home, and there was actually a retention pond in between us and the homes that were being built. And so what the developer did was he built a double PVC fence to give, again, level of privacy to both groups of homeowners. So I'm just, you know, concerned about that as well, as there is a conservation lot on the back end of Fishhawk West across the street from Boyett Road. So there is a lot of animals and wildlife that use these tree lines, obviously, to kind of get through as cover. So I'm just worried if all of the trees are leveled, that it won't leave, you know, the nature there for the animals to have cover getting from the conservation lot across Boyett Road. So there's that element as well. So again, I'm not sure this is properly the right format, but I just wanted to make those concerns known in hopes of, when Pulte does do this development, that they leave, you know, some level of tree line there for both groups of homeowners.
And, thank you. I'm thinking that this is about the proportionate share for schools, and so it might be more appropriate, in your points, to be taken just in general public comment at the beginning of a board meeting. Ms. Beck, I don't know, would you like to? It would seem an appropriate time. I'd just like to let you know that that opportunity is available to you before each and every meeting for three minutes. I don't know if-
Yes, Madam Chair, you're absolutely, absolutely correct. There's always that opportunity to express those concerns or to express them directly to Pulte as well.
Okay, thank you. And having that, and there weren't any other comments with regard to the proportionate share, do we, we don't have anyone else out there virtually to comment?
Chairwoman, that is the last person that has signed up for D3. I believe Kami Corbett did want to speak again.
Uh, okay.
If it's-
I'll, I'll let that go this time. Go ahead, Ms. Corbett. You don't have three minutes. I think you took up about 30 seconds before, so.
Just very briefly, this item, this issue did come up during the rezoning, and we actually did leave a vegetative buffer along that side of the development, and it is in the rezoning, and it's on the approved site plan, and I'd be happy to speak to Mr. Ambrose separately about that.
Okay.
And as Ms. Beck pointed out, that's not appropriate for this particular hearing, but thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, and seeing that we have no further comment, I believe at this virtual public hearing, we'll close the hearing, and we will move now to Commissioners. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And a couple of things. I know that the land use attorneys, including Ms. Corbett herself, have objected to any suggestion of, that I've made of flexing the rules for public comment to allow citizens to speak if they haven't, if they aren't doing it exactly according to our process regulations. So, again, I would just reiterate that my position that we need to be consistent if we are going to be very strict about process in the turns and the minutes that are allotted citizens, we need to be just as strict in following the process for the applicants and the land use attorneys and everyone else. About this prop share agreement, the three ones that are coming before us, I'm going to be supporting them because that's the current process, but I'm just going to point out, it is something that we could all be thinking about as we prepare to have the workshop we've talked about having with school board members, to look at how this is working. In this case, the Girl Scout Camp, Camp Dorothy Thomas, is not able to provide, in their development of this property for residential development, they're not able to provide school capacity in their district, in their school zone, and so they can't meet concurrency. And so what this prop share agreement allows them to do is to pay into the school district's general fund to provide capacity in somewhere else. In this case, it's Water Set, which is, if you know where that is, that's near Apollo Beach, and this Camp Dorothy Thomas is 13 miles to the east of that. In the case of D5 that is coming, well, the next one that's coming before is D4. The Bogan Villa development is just under a mile from a Barrington Middle School, but the developer is, there's no room for their students there, so the developer's buying seats in Water Set, which is a 14-mile drive away. And in our next one, the Hawkstone, which is the first hearing on that one, they're also buying 50 middle school seats at the Water Set School. So all three of these are buying seats in the Water Set School near Apollo Beach, even though they are far, far to the east. And in fact, the Hawkstone one in D5, I'll just address now, that is in the RP2 area, east of Baum, south of Fishhawk, on the way to the reservoir. And so they, there's no school capacity there, so they're paying for seats and capacity in Water Set. Now, the way I understand it, their kids are not going to go to school in Water Set. They're going to go to school in a nearby school, but then they will, the school district will adjust the students, and so they'll have kind of a ripple effect of pushing students out of their local school into the next school, and those students pushing students out of that into the next school, all the way out to Apollo Beach, where students would be pushed into that school. Theoretically, we could be approving prop share agreements for a development outside Wy Mama in WVR2, that in the southern, southeastern corner of the county, that would buy capacity maybe in loots, and ripple students all the way across the county to loot. So just food for thought about how that is working, and if Mr. Gormley wants to point out anything about that, but I just, it's a very complicated system of how we are addressing school concurrency, and I just want to point these things out as we go along to consider and be thinking about before we get to the workshop with citizen, with the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. And, let's see, Commissioner Myers, you're recognized? Oh, you can, okay, that's fine. I used to have a problem where my hand would never go down, and somehow it got resolved. But, let's see, I don't see anyone else, I don't see any more comments on this, so if we can, seeing no further, we have a motion by, I'm sorry, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. So Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Myers and Commissioner White. And seeing no more, further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Item D4 is also a public hearing. Adam Gormley will lead us through this one as well.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services. Item D4 is the second of two required public hearings to consider adoption of a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst the county, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Franklin Development Corp. This agreement is for the Bogan Villas Townhome subdivision, consisting of seven, I'm sorry, 40 single-family attached residences. The agreement calls for a payment of $55,775 to fund two middle school student stations at PK through eight, Water Set PK through eight UU school. This is a public hearing. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I don't see anyone signed up for D4.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
We have a Clayton Bricklemyer that has signed up to speak.
Oh, okay. Somehow didn't-
He wishes to speak.
So, Mr. Bricklemyer, you're recognized?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I hope you can hear me. I'm really just here to say that I'm available for questions on this item, and I'd ask for your approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay.
No, there is not. Thank you.
Hearing no further public comment, I'll close the public hearing, and if we can, do we have a motion by the board discussion?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes. Yes. Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is item D5. This is the first of two public hearings, and therefore no final action will be required at this time. Adam Gormley will lead us through this one as well. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D5 is the first of two required public hearings to consider school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement for the, amongst the county, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and homes by West Bay LLC. The agreement is for the Hinton Hawkstone proposed subdivision, consisting of 571 single-family detached units. The agreement calls for a payment of $1,394,377 to fund 50 middle school student stations at the Waterset PK through eight UU school to accommodate the impacts of the project. The second public hearing is scheduled to be held on February 17, 2021. This is a public hearing, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and on D5, and I see that we have virtually one listed. Kami Corbett, Ms. Corbett?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is Kami Corbett with Hill Ward Henderson. I'm representing the applicant, and I'm available to answer any questions should anyone have them.
Thank you. And I have no one else listed to speak. Is there, in hearing none?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing. And do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, moved by Commissioner-
No action.
Seconded by-
No actions required at this time, Commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry, this was the first public hearing. Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is item E1, which is our emergency management operations related to COVID-19 and the local state of emergency. And we'll turn it over to Tim Dudley. Before he does that, I just want to remind everybody and thank our staff and our partners. You know, of course, we've transitioned to the vaccine phase. During this time, we're still, of course, doing a lot of testing in the community, and also assisting with a big football game in town this weekend. So it's a lot of action required by our emergency management staff, and I want to thank them publicly for doing that. With that, I'll turn it over to Tim Dudley.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Tim Dudley, Office of Emergency Management. I will provide an update on current operations. Last week, Hillsborough County averaged approximately 1,200 daily tests collected. We're down 21% from previous weeks. The state testing site at Raymond James Stadium's numbers have been well below operating averages. We anticipate this to pick up after the game next week. Hillsborough County continues to dispense COVID-19 vaccines to populations prioritized by the governor's executive order via our geographically diverse sites. We are tracking first and second doses and working with the Department of Health and other partners to ensure that the importance of the vaccine is promoted to the population and made available as more vaccines inventory is received in the county. Code enforcement officers continue our countywide mask mandate educational blitz campaign at various businesses throughout the county. We will be supporting the city of Tampa with, with multiple agencies' compliance enforcement efforts across the region during Super Bowl weekend. To date, we have visited more than 4,100 establishments, county collections. The county has hit over 1 million test COVID-19 tests collected, and also vaccines. As of January 30, a little over 75,000 vaccines have been administered, and we continue those operations to date. This concludes my update. Any questions?
Madam Vice Chair Overman, the chair has stepped out of the room. If you'd like to take over, chairing?
Thank you. I couldn't, I did not see that occur, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Dudley, for your report. I truly appreciate the amount of work that the Emergency Operations Center is doing as well. You guys have been our heroes on the ground, making sure that everyone is doing what they need to do. And I, I do appreciate the report on the number of vaccines as well as code enforcement's efforts. It's great to see that we are, we are seeing great compliance, and I'm looking forward to seeing Dr. Holt's report that shows some of that code enforcement effect has actually assisted in helping our numbers come down, and our citizens' efforts to be excellent in following protocols has really reflected in the numbers that we'll hear from Dr. Holt. Not seeing any other comments from the Commissioners at this point regarding Mr. Dudley's report. I'd like to move on to Dr. Holt's report, the public health update. Dr. Holt, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is Dr. Doug Holt, the Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County. I will do a brief update on the epidemiology information, the health systems data, a few comments on the vaccination efforts, then Mr. Wagner will review the dashboard. Did I have the first slide, please? Okay, as you can see, we are in a downslope of a recent peak. The, the curves look very similar to our July peak, with the exception of the magnitude that we, the, the amount of infections we had in our most recent. So while we are in the downslope, if you'll notice, we're still in the same neighborhood of our July peak. So there's still a lot of virus being transmitted in our county. I do expect to see this decline gradually continue, sort of as we experienced before. There has been some speculations or forecasts that the identification of recently identified variant strains could have an impact on this. I'll do a quick variant 101. These variants are normal and an expected occurrence. Essentially, every time someone's infected with COVID, while the virus replicates in that person, mutations occur. And if this mutation results in any survival advantages, that variant can become dominant, if you will. And so with this extraordinarily high level of active new infections that's going on, that's associated with a tremendous amount of viral replication. So this evolutionary process has occurred essentially at a kind of warp speed, if you will. This virus typically is not viewed as a highly mutagenic, but when you get this many viral replications going, it's just a matter of math. The advantages, really, there's two advantages that these mutations can result in. One is that the new variant is more infectious, and so far, not surprising, all of those that are emerging have that, share that in common. The other advantage is it's, this variant is more fit, it's less susceptible to the natural immunity. So it tends to allow itself to survive the initial attack of the immune system and, and go into its later phases. The concerns that are often described about being more deadly or severe, generally, they're not an advantage to the virus, which really prefers to have more people to infect than, than less. But it can, and then that is a huge concern that if we saw that. And then, of course, with a lot of discussions on, are they less responsive to the vaccine? There's three main variants that have been described. They're really where they're first recognized, doesn't mean where they originated. So you may see them, we have seen them in Florida, US, but it's not about someone who is infected with that variant bringing it here. It's a matter of the process of mutation is occurring, similar to what is happening worldwide. The UK variant is the most, seems to be the most frequent in this country, at least as identified. It still represents a small fraction, but it has the potential to, to, been speculated, it could become even the dominant one. It's definitely more contagious. Don't know about the, the deadly or how serious. And the vaccines do appear to work with this. Brazil is, again, as I mentioned, more contagious. And so far, the vaccine seems to be also effective, but there hasn't been a lot of studies. It has been found in the US, but not as much as the UK variant. And in the South African is one that I think the people have the greatest concern, in addition to being contagious. Some of the data with some of the vaccines being studied over there suggested it was less effective. Would note that the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines can be really quickly redesigned to, to be effective. We may even see a future where flu, it's like flu, where you have different strains each year. I'll conclude with, the vaccine supply remains tight. We've been told not to expect any increases over the next three weeks. Comments regarding the Johnson &amp; Johnson incoming, I don't expect that to really be much available until April or May. So basically, we got, you know, what we got, and we're, don't have enough of it, but we are using it the best we can, as Mr. Dudley outlined in his report. Our, our drive-throughs are now state-run. We recently completed one at Sun City, and there's one out there in Kings Point. These are both 55-plus communities that the governor has initiated. So this is Governor DeSantis' initiative, not locally. Our TVAs are working very successful. We've, essentially, we'll have completed 18 as of this week, including two second doses. And just a final note, I should say that President Biden, Biden did announce there was a federal retail pharmacy program just yesterday. He intends to partner with a commercial, private sector pharmacies, including CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Publix, others like that. I don't know much about it yet. I don't know where the vaccine is going to come directly from the feds to those companies, or whether it'll come out of the state. So I can provide more as I become aware. With that, I will conclude and ask Mr. Wagner to review the dashboard.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Wagner, Business Analyst, Healthcare Services Department. As Dr. Holt indicated this morning, I will present the dashboard that's available on Hillsborough County's website publicly. As indicated before, there's over 101,000 confirmed cases in Hillsborough County of citizens who have had COVID-19 or do, or currently have COVID-19. To date, the FDA estimates 1,307 fatalities related to this. And we've added on the first row, our IT department, the number of Hillsborough County residents vaccinated who have received the first dose. As of yesterday's data drop, it was 55,716, the first vaccination dose, and nearly 20,000 have completed the series with the second dose based upon available vaccines. The seven and 14-day percentage change is in our green metric, going down as Dr. Holt indicated. And unfortunately, on our metric with regard to testing average per week, that has slipped to under 40,000 on a 14-day period. That's why that's in the peach red color. Our testing positively has gone down as well to near, under, slightly under 11% on a 14-day count. And the hospitalization data still is, the hospitals are still holding firm, but we do see on the seven-day hospitalization occupancy, nearly 87%, or slightly above 87%, and that's increased over the seven and even 14-day period. Speaking to the cases per day summary on the bottom, as Dr. Holt indicated, are, we have slowly seen a decrease in the number of cases on a seven and 14-day average, and much less than our peaks that were in July, which are not indicated on this current chart. But we are seeing a slight decrease. At the hospitalization page three, again, speaking to the bottom two rows, the hospital census, as you can see, has increased since November, December, with a slight decrease in January, as well as the COVID-19 admissions seeing an increase in November, December, and a slight decrease in January as well. The testing slide, there, there is always a lot going on, on this slide, but I, I'm going to speak on the first row to the far right-hand side. The testing goal, as indicated by Dr. Holt, is again, 47,200 a week. We've seen that climb from January to January 21. So the story has been that testing has increased in the community, along with Mr. Dudley's report and Dr. Holt's report. A slight decrease in the last seven to 14 days, but overall, the testing capacity has increased. So it's good to look at the historical view of this once in a while. Same things represented on the bottom, the testing summary by week. Again, we see that increase over time. And our positivity rate, again, matches the curve of the number of cases in the community. In July, nearly 18%. It dropped down to 5% to 7% in September and October, November, and increased again in November, December, and January. And hopefully, we are in a continued downslope around 10%, as mentioned earlier. And the last one, as always presented, is the cases by age group. Again, this is the identified school age groups. The top one is the individual cases per day. So again, a lot of variability. The bottom row respectfully is the seven-day case count per 100,000 by the age groups. And again, we're seeing, you know, the highest one is again, still the 18 to 24-year-old group, but they have started to come down as well. So again, what's represented are the school age groups, and I'll stop there for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I truly appreciate that. I do see-
Thank you.
I don't know whether the chair's back. Is the chair back?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman, you wanted to speak?
Actually, Commissioner, Commissioner Smith has had her hand up for a bit, so.
Oh, okay, because I haven't, it goes away on my screen here, the hands do, when I, when a presentation comes up. I'm not sure why, but any, here we go. It's back again. There we go. And so Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thanks. I just have a, a question about the, and I'm not sure whether it's for Mr. Dudley or Mr. Holt. I think it's Dr. Holt, in fact, about the state's process for vaccinating people who don't own cars. They are being told that the state will only vaccinate people arriving in vehicles. And in fact, we helped a constituent in, in my office to get transportation. He had gotten a, his first dose by walking up to the site after, you know, going through the proper procedures of setting his appointment. So he walked up for his first injection and was given an appointment for his second dose, but when he showed up for that one on his electric scooter, he was turned away and, and told that he had to be in a car. Well, this man doesn't own a car, and they said he cannot afford to hire an Uber or a taxi, which was suggested to him at the vaccination site, to wait in line. He was told by staff there that he could get his second shot at any hospital, but when he called a local hospital, he was told that CDC guidelines require that whoever gives a person their first vaccination must also give them their second one. So, so this man was like frantic, unable to get his second vaccination dose when he contacted our office. And you can imagine how stressful this was for him. As I say, we were finally able to work out a special arrangement with the- As I say, we were finally able to work out a special arrangement with the Sunshine Line for this particular case, for which he was very grateful. But I just want to, you know, raise this to the, bring this to the board's awareness and ask, take this opportunity to ask, how can we make this go more smoothly for others that don't own a car? And what is the process so that we can understand what to tell such people? But also, we need to make sure that the right instructions are given to people on our website and the state website about what the requirement is regarding whether, you know, they have to drive up in a car and what to do if they don't own a car. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner, this is Dr. Holt. I'll start, and I think Mr. Dudley will know closer on the ground. Both of the comments that you made kind of show the problem with the people answering the question, don't know what is right. I'll begin with the last one. There is no, the CDC says anyone should vaccinate a second dose if you have vaccine. It's not required to go back to where you got your first one. We have done that in this county as a matter of convenience, but there is no requirement. As far as the transportation, what I found and I shared with your aide was that the person on the site, the manager, and the state's had some staffing changes erroneously told the person that, and the governor's directive is very clear that they will accommodate people on-site. And, you know, I know we have staff there that are supporting, so I hope that is continuing to be practiced by the people on-site. Challenges that I think are coming and we're working through statewide is just trying to make the appointments itself. We have encountered challenges for a variety of examples of blind people and others' things. So each of them, I think, do intend to make it as accessible as possible. But, you know, I'll defer to Mr. Dudley to know a little closer on what's the actual, what they're supposed to be doing at the site. And actually, I should say not what's supposed to be doing, but what they are doing.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Dudley.
Afternoon. Yes, I appreciate you bringing that up. We did, I'd like to thank the Sunshine Line team for being able to transport them over to one of the county sites as well. We'll be following up to see that those corrections were made. I was briefed that they received instructions to accommodate, and they were making adjustments also. So folks can continue to make their appointments. They'll be scheduled for their appointments. And prior to the arrival of that new team, we were able to make those accommodations. There were just some concerns about how we would transport folks to the different levels, but we've made adjustments to bring vaccines down to a lower level and have an area to accommodate that as well.
Thank you very much, because the last I heard was that this was unresolved. So thank you very much.
And again, I'll make sure that, as Dr. Holt briefed, soon as I close this out here, I'll make sure that is definitely confirmed, and we'll make sure we have the appropriate information.
Thank you, thanks. That's extremely important. So thank you, Commissioner Smith, too, for raising that concern. And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Commissioner Smith, for bringing this up. You know, when we first rolled out our testing program, we ran into similar concerns for, you know, the over 100,000 folks within Hillsborough County that just don't have vehicles. And then there's those that may have vehicles but are unable to really manage utilizing them in order to access the testing. I anticipated that we would have some challenges with vaccination as well, and since it takes two trips to get that done, I'm certain that our teams, in coordination with the state, will work diligently to try and make sure that we are communicating accurately each time when a citizen has some concerns. So I'm glad we're having this conversation so that we work through those challenges and make sure that we reveal to our citizens how they can access it and avoid, you know, the inconvenience of not understanding what they need to do in order to get this done because it's so critically important. With that being said, I want to thank Mr. Wagner and Dr. Holt and Mr. Dudley on bringing forth the information that shows us that after the holiday spike that we saw, we have seen that the communication, code enforcement, extra efforts by our citizens and our business owners is reflecting in a drop in the numbers. While they're still high, they're looking good. So I'm glad to see that everybody's working together in order to minimize the spread of this, and working very hard to do so. You know, we do have another very large celebratory event on the horizon, and I have worked quite a bit, as I know the whole team here has, with the NFL, with the Sports Commission, with the various different emergency folks, to really understand what is being done with the major events that are occurring. And then we heard last week that the mayor of Tampa has expanded the mask order in order to protect those individuals that may have difficulty in social distancing and encourage businesses to really ramp up the sanitation, you know, process in those entertainment districts where people will gather. In experiencing the work that the NFL in organizing the major events all around town, the strong adherence, the strong mandate, and the strong observation or enforcement of the mask order outdoors, it was very evident in what I could see and what I've heard. That will also be the case in those entertainment districts, as well as any event that is associated with the Super Bowl, that is NFL and Super Bowl sanctioned. They've taken great effort. They've reduced, you know, not only the media contacts, but also any area in order to make sure that the social distancing is possible and that masking is mandatory. I just, I want to encourage our businesses that are hosting events to follow those protocols. We have not, as we did the last meeting, we have not enforced them as a mandate, but we've strongly encouraged them. And as we see the numbers, it is helping bring our numbers down. However, as we see from the numbers that Mr. Wagner brought up, you know, we have seen an increase in hospitalizations from the previous spike. So I do encourage everyone to stay on point. It will be a while before we have broad range access to vaccinations to get everyone vaccinated. And the last thing we want is our citizens and visitors that are coming here to end up with something they weren't planning on, including in their life when they're celebrating the great event this weekend. So I just want to thank everyone that's working so hard to make sure that the whole Tampa Bay area shines with this great event, with the, associated with the Super Bowl. And also, you know, make sure that everyone has a wonderful and safe time. And thank you very much for all the work that's being done. I'll stop there.
Thank you. And I don't see any other Commissioners' hands up. Before we go on, I'd just like to make sure that we say, "Go Bucks," but be, be, be safe. And I personally am very afraid of the variants that seem to be out there, that they're not certain at this time the vaccine will manage and that are more transmissible. So we're not, as much as I and everybody else would like to take a deep breath and just say somehow this is, we're on the other side of this, we're not there yet, it's really important for us all to practice, still practice social distancing, still wear our masks and still be careful and thoughtful and do everything we can to minimize this. I'd also like to, just for the record, I know that we had, we've had this transition from the county doing this to the state doing this, that is giving the vaccine. And, you know, in the auto, the car issue is a very good issue. I heard from constituents that actually ran out of gas in line, somebody had a car overheated and couldn't get tested, and issues like that, but that's in testing. And the county, really, I think I'd like to just recognize us for setting a model when it comes to the actual vaccinations, ones that, one that it seems like the state has now looked to and is doing. I've, just for the record, I know we had a lot of stumbles there without enough resources, I'd say, on the part of the county. No county, I think, could handle the onslaught of calls and contacts as people were extremely anxious to get the vaccination. It was extraordinarily difficult. We had vendors doing it, it just, it was very, very difficult. But when it came to giving the vaccines that we set up, setting the appointments, having people come in and out and do it in the most efficient, expert manner, I just also received a lot of emails and contacts complimenting the county for, I mean, somebody said, "I went in at 2:00, I came out at 2:20 vaccinated." And I read about places all over the country where that just wasn't the case, where for the vaccines, people were waiting in line in the cold and the heat, you know, in other ways for hours and hours. And I really feel like the county did a wonderful job. I'd like to, I know Ms. Wise has been very involved in overheading that and just, and just looking over what we were doing with COVID in our county, as well as Greg Cordell, John Mueller, and you might, I don't know Ms. Weiser's, I'm sure a number of names besides the ones that we hear giving reports every week that are, have been involved and done an incredible job of making sure that these efforts went forward. Again, it's a state with a little assistance from our county here, and then some local smaller efforts that we've done at churches, that I think have just been very commendable, churches and community centers. But I just would like to recognize that because it's a little bit unsung, and I think we need to be very proud of what we've done. And hopefully, the situation will get better. I guess we've gone from nationwide, something like 700,000 vaccines a day, to a million, to 1.2 with a goal of 1.5. So we will hopefully get people vaccinated much more quickly and open this up. But Ms. Wise, I'll recognize you.
Thank you for those kind words, and partly for some of the things you're mentioning is why we are really focusing on a lot of those targeted vaccination areas for people who don't have the transportation, senior housing, and the churches as well. So, and there is, of course, a whole army of people who are working behind the scenes. Thank you for recognizing them. The last item on this particular area is the county attorney's update regarding the extension of the emergency order.
Yes, Board members, very briefly, in accordance with Florida statutes, we have provided a draft order to extend the local state of emergency for an additional seven days. And at this time, Madam Chair, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion relative to that order.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a, okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Overman, and seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is Commissioner Cohen's item, item F2 regarding renaming 419 North Pierce Street for the Honorable Pat Frank.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I brought this item up a few weeks ago and have been working with Ms. Wise and her staff on an appropriate recognition for a person who has literally given 50 years to public service on behalf of our county and our state. Pat Frank ran for office once, twice, three times, four times before she was finally elected to the Hillsborough County School Board in 1972. And she ran at the time because she was a concerned parent. She was concerned about the way in which the schools were not properly desegregating, and she wanted to be part of the process to make the whole, the whole desegregation and integration process smoother. And that embarked her on a career that took her to the Florida House of Representatives and to 10 years in the Florida Senate, where she was an enormously effective legislator. She ran for some interesting offices, including the United States Senate, the United States Congress, and lieutenant governor in the intervening years, and then served six years here as a member of the Board of County Commissioners, three terms as chair. And at the age of 74, was elected clerk of the circuit court and comptroller of Hillsborough County, and served four terms in that role, retiring just a month ago at the age of 91. And it is not an exaggeration to say there has never been a blemish on her reputation in all the years that she has served in public office. She always upheld the highest, highest standards of integrity and ethics, and really was just a tremendously interesting person to work for and spend time with. One of the, one of the things that I really learned from Pat over the years is the importance of resilience as a quality in a human being. And time and time again, I saw her overcome challenges, personal and professional, in order to keep her eye on the ball and get done what she needed to get done in whatever role she was, she was serving in. What makes this so special is that we are able to do this, and hopefully, when the COVID epidemic is done, we can actually invite her to come and speak at the dedication itself so that we can celebrate her long career in public service to this county. The reason that this building is significant is because it's actually where the school board met when she was first elected to it. It is where the legislative delegation gave its reports when she was in the, in the Florida House and the Florida Senate. And then, of course, in her years with the county and as the clerk, that, that building is one of the most important public-facing buildings in the Clerk's campus. That's where the official records are, and that's where marriage ceremonies are held. So I think it's a very, very fitting honor for her, and I think that it honors not just her career as a public servant to this community, but also the fact that she was one of the pioneering women leaders in this community at a time when there were a lot fewer than there are today. And I think all of us, men and women, stand on her shoulders and aspire to be the type of public servant that she has always proved to be. So I'm just going to, I guess, motion that we formally rename 419 North Pierce Street for the Honorable Pat Frank. The county has been looking at the opportunities for appropriate signage and recognition inside the building, and also the installation of a bronze plaque outside the building, marking her name and the fact that it was done by the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Second.
Okay. We, thank you, Commissioner Cohen. We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, it's been seconded by Commissioner Overman. And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Cohen, for bringing this forward. I believe that all of us are in awe of Ms. Frank's career. I cannot think of no finer honor befitting of Pat Frank for her remarkable years of service to the residents of Hillsborough County by renaming the 419 North Pierce Street location. She's a trailblazer, as we've heard, her entire life. I frequently, she was actually one of the first elected officials I met when I moved to Tampa in 84. I have watched her in awe over her amazing I have watched her in awe over her amazing career as a public servant and as an elective officer. The old courthouse is an architectural gem and with many important tributes, such as our war memorials, the statue of Judge E.J. Selsinius and its historical marker, celebrating then presidential candidate, Senator John F. Kennedy's 1960 speech at the courthouse to 10,000 people on the Declaration of His Latin American Policy. And today's action, that architectural gem, will now be named after our local gem, Pat Frank. She's the epitome of a public servant. And as I had frequently described her as the ever-ready bunny because she was ever-ready to stand in the role of an elected official as an advocate for fairness and human rights, as well as her commitment to excellence in running the clerk's department or clerk's agency, I don't see any other better way to really celebrate her amazing contributions to our community. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hagan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll be brief. I want to, first of all, thank Commissioner Cohen for bringing this item up. I had the pleasure of serving with then Commissioner Frank for four years, my first four years on the board. And of course, I had heard a lot about Commissioner Frank prior to, to, to being elected at 34. And I can just say, from my perspective, she was a remarkable public servant, extremely smart. I'm sure as everyone here knows, especially Commissioner Cohen, would certainly speak her mind. She did not care about Republican, Democrat, any of that stuff. I mean, she fought for what she believed in. I can tell you many times, we were both on the losing side of five to two votes. And I was always impressed that she was a, she worked tirelessly. And then, we really didn't use computers much back then, I still don't, but she was definitely old-school like me and she'd come in with her thick binder and I'd look over at it and there, every section would be tabbed, it'd be highlighted in different colors. I mean, it was clear that she was doing her homework and going above and beyond the call of duty. So I'm very proud to support this and I, again, want to thank Commissioner Cohen for, for initiating it.
Thank you. And I'll just say that, thank you for bringing it forward, Commissioner Cohen. Certainly, Pat Frank has a, a long history of service to the community. In fact, when you title, you can't figure out Senator Pat Frank or Clerk Pat Frank. She's just done wonderful contributions and I know we had a tribute to her a few months ago and her record is long. I did not know she ran for school board four times. That's amazing.
She claims that one of the elections was actually stolen from her. Maybe she'll tell that story at that occasion.
I didn't know that, but I, I have heard about her, the, I think, the first and only woman to be attending, I always remember Georgetown Law School and how she was kind of drummed out. And I've heard that story from several others with their law school experiences early on, women and other minorities that were not given their shot at the time. And so she's certainly made a contribution and thank you for bringing this up. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Just briefly, I, I just want to support the item and we have recently honored Ms. Frank. And I spoke quite a bit then of my admiration and history and the fact that I've learned a lot from her. And so I won't do all that now, but I, I just want to say I'm firmly on board for this item and mention that when Commissioner Frank was on this board, that was the board that I refer to as the Camelot days of our county commission. And I aspire to bring us to that level, as, as Commissioner Hagan said, that those days' board members really worked hard and, and I hope to fight, to just stand on their shoulders and follow in their footsteps. And she, she always did the right thing for the right reasons, let the chips fall where they may, and, and that is real integrity and real leadership. So with that, I'll support the item.
Thank you. And seeing no further comments to be made, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item B2, which is to accept the code violations process audit report. And the, from the County Internal Auditor's Office, Peggy Caskin will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Peggy Caskin and I'm the County Internal Auditor. I'm here today to request the board's acceptance of the code violation process audit report 2021-01. The audit was conducted and conforms with the international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing, which is often referred to the Red Book standards. The Code Enforcement Department is responsible for the enforcement of land and property violations in unincorporated Hillsborough County to eliminate conditions that threaten the life, health, safety, and general welfare of residents. The department investigates complaints about possible violations in relation to the county's codes and ordinances. Overall, the design of the code violation process has an adequate control structure that aligns with applicable written guiding principles while lacking some implementation of controls in the settlement function. The audit team did identify some risk and improvement areas, but I'm happy to say that management has already mitigated these risks and by doing so, management has achieved a higher level of maturity. Prior to today, I held a debrief session with each of you. So if there are no questions, I would ask the board to accept the report.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner White and seconded by Commissioner Overman to accept the report and seeing no...
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't hear the motion. Can Commissioner White please restate it?
To move approval of this, accepting this report is the motion. Commissioner White?
Thank you.
Seconded by Commissioner Overman?
Actually, I think it was Commissioner Myers. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, we've got that straight. And seeing no further discussion, can we please have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We'll move back to the regular agenda and to item B3, which is a budget amendment. And Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget Director, will, will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget. Item B3, excuse me, item B3 is asking you to approve by a supermajority vote, an FY21 budget amendment to transfer $11 million from the catastrophic disaster recovery fund to our FEMA COVID-19 disaster recovery fund. This action will enable continued funding for vaccination and testing costs and other costs related to the COVID-19 health emergency. When this was written, we expected about 87.5% reimbursement from FEMA of these costs. The President, the new President, has issued two orders recently that indicate that in many cases, we may be able to recover 100% of these costs. Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Overman and seconded by Commissioner Myers. Was that? Okay, thank you. And seeing no further, Commissioner Smith, do you have your hand up on this? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item B4, which is a procurement item for yard and wood waste processing. Scott Stromer will present this item.
Good morning, Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B4 is asking the board to award a five, award five-year contracts to the three lowest pre-sponsored responsible bidders by group for ongoing and as-needed yard and wood waste processing for the solid waste management division. Awards are recommended for Gaston Tree Debris Recycling LLC for Group 1, which is the North Yard Waste Processing Facility, at a cost of $9,408,203. Justin Industries Incorporated for Group 2, which is the Falkenburg Yard Waste Processing Facility, which is an award amount of $6,163,260. And Big Dog Express of Florida Incorporated for Group 3, which is the South County Yard Waste Processing Facility, at a cost of $3,523,100, for a total estimated cost of $19,94,643. Subject services include managing and receiving of yard waste material processing sites, grinding, loading, and transporting the processed materials to the final disposal site and providing required services during emergencies. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner White to move approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Myers, we have a, Commissioner Myers, seconded the motion. And seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item B4, which is a procurement item for yard and wood waste processing. Scott Stromer will present this item.
Good morning, Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B4 is asking the board to award a five, award five-year contracts to the three lowest pre-sponsored responsible bidders by group for ongoing and as-needed yard and wood waste processing for the solid waste management division. Awards are recommended for Gaston Tree Debris Recycling LLC for Group 1, which is the North Yard Waste Processing Facility, at a cost of $9,408,203. Justin Industries Incorporated for Group 2, which is the Falkenburg Yard Waste Processing Facility, which is an award amount of $6,163,260. And Big Dog Express of Florida Incorporated for Group 3, which is the South County Yard Waste Processing Facility, at a cost of $3,523,100, for a total estimated cost of $19,94,643. Subject services include managing and receiving of yard waste material processing sites, grinding, loading, and transporting the processed materials to the final disposal site and providing required services during emergencies. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner White to move approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Myers, we have a, Commissioner Myers, seconded the motion. And seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item B4, which is a procurement item for yard and wood waste processing. Scott Stromer will present this item.
Good morning, Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B4 is asking the board to award a five, award five-year contracts to the three lowest pre-sponsored responsible bidders by group for ongoing and as-needed yard and wood waste processing for the solid waste management division. Awards are recommended for Gaston Tree Debris Recycling LLC for Group 1, which is the North Yard Waste Processing Facility, at a cost of $9,408,203. Justin Industries Incorporated for Group 2, which is the Falkenburg Yard Waste Processing Facility, which is an award amount of $6,163,260. And Big Dog Express of Florida Incorporated for Group 3, which is the South County Yard Waste Processing Facility, at a cost of $3,523,100, for a total estimated cost of $19,94,643. Subject services include managing and receiving of yard waste material processing sites, grinding, loading, and transporting the processed materials to the final disposal site and providing required services during emergencies. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner White to move approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Myers, we have a, Commissioner Myers, seconded the motion. And seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
The next item is item F1. You have several board appointments. Luanne Finley will take you through those appointments.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Luanne Finley, Board Services. You have several boards to make appointments to. The first one is the Planning Commission. Please choose one, Commissioner Kemp.
I'm, I had a little difficulty hearing. Did you call on me for my vote?
Yes.
Yes, I'm voting for number six, Vivian Handy. And we didn't have any discussion and rarely do, but I would just like to say that Vivian Handy, well, once served on the Planning Commission. I think it's really important that we have someone that has been in Wy Mama for South County for all these years and that could really give perspective to the Planning Commission with regards to, to that. And that is why number six for me.
Excuse me, excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I was hoping we could have just a moment of, of discussion.
Sure, you're recognized. I think it's valuable for us to do that from time, we don't often do it, but sometimes we do and I think it's always valuable.
Yes, and in this case, with the Planning Commission in particular, it, it's a board that does some very important recommendations to us in terms of our comprehensive plan. And we have some really important issues at, at the moment, going through this process. All of the people applying for the Planning Commission are motivated by a wonderful desire to serve their community, but most of them have no specific experience with our planning process, our zoning process, environmental regulation, community planning, all of which Vivian Handy has, has decades of experience with. She was an original architect of the Wy Mama Community Plan. She has come and provided input to County Commission zoning hearings, Planning Commission hearings on comprehensive plan amendments. And, and so that is why I am strongly supporting her. I've known her for a long, long time. She's a sensible, very intelligent woman who has, who has actually been in the trenches and been involved in planning processes. And I think that's really important in an appointment for this board, that we, that we bring in somebody with, with that kind of experience with planning issues to hit the ground running and provide particularly a South County perspective in this time when so much of our growth and development decisions are from South County. So I just wanted to let people know what I know about this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any other further comments at this time on this important position? Seeing none, I do not believe. We will continue, can you, continue to do the roll call vote, Ms. Finley? Mine, mine being for number six.
Okay. Commissioner Overman?
Number six as well.
Commissioner White?
Number four.
Commissioner Cohen?
Number six.
Commissioner Hagan?
Number eight.
Commissioner Myers?
Number three.
Commissioner Smith?
Number six.
Vivian Handy will be appointed to the Planning Commission. Your next board is the Code Enforcement Board. Please choose one, Commissioner Kemp.
Number 11.
Commissioner Overman?
Number 11.
Your next board is the Housing Finance Authority. Please choose one, Commissioner Kemp.
Eighteen.
Commissioner Overman?
Eighteen.
Commissioner White?
Eighteen.
Commissioner Cohen?
Eighteen.
Commissioner Hagan?
Seventeen.
Commissioner Myers?
Eighteen.
Commissioner Smith?
Eighteen.
Harry Hedges will be reappointed to the Housing Finance Authority. Your next board is your Human Relations Board. The individuals on this list, Louis Gomez, Frank Roder, and Shoma Shelley, will be reappointed. Your next board is your Industrial Development Authority. Please choose one, Commissioner Kemp.
Uh, twenty-two.
Commissioner Overman?
This is a difficult choice for me.
Yes, it is.
I'd like, I'd like to offer, um, just a few comments about this board. I, I do believe, um, the, the current candidate for reappointment, Victor DiMayo, has served us incredibly well. However, this is an all-male board, um, and if I'm not mistaken. And, um, we've, we have, you know, an excellent candidate in, uh, with Ms. Parks that has, uh, a long legacy of, of working with corporations, of doing the due diligence, and understanding how to do fundraising for those corporations to meet their mission as they, they grow. Um, and, and working with the, the financial professionals that, uh, are not only analy, our professional, uh, advisors that analyze these deals, but also with the corporations and, and, uh, the county staff as well. I think she would be an excellent candidate. So I was really torn in this particular circumstance, um, in terms of how to, how to jump between the two. Um, I wish we could have both of them, to tell you the truth, honestly. Um, but given, uh, Victor DiMayo's, um, long legacy of leadership on this particular board, I'm gonna support number twenty-two. Um, I just wish we had another opportunity to as well. So, that being said, twenty-two is my choice.
Mr. White?
Twenty-two.
Mr. Cohen?
Twenty-three.
Commissioner Hagan?
Twenty-two.
Commissioner Myers?
Twenty-three.
Commissioner Smith?
Twenty-three.
It will be Victor DiMayo will be reappointed to the Industrial Development Authority. Your last board is the Torres Development Council. Please choose three, Commissioner Kemp.
Uh, just to the last one, I'd just like to say, hopefully, I think positions come open every year, and I agree with Commissioner Overman that we had two very, one with a long service and another stellar, and, and too few women, maybe no women on that board. Um, so, um, I will do, I, I have one position on this?
Three.
I'm sorry, three?
For the Torres Development Council.
All right. Um, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Mr. Overman?
I, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven.
Mr. White?
Twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven.
Mr. Cohen?
Twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Mr. Hagan?
Twenty-four, uh, twenty-five, and twenty-seven.
Commissioner Myers?
Twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Commissioner Smith?
Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
It will be Lou Posensio, Richard Gonsmart, and Brian Kilpatrick. And that's the three boards in council.
Move to confirm?
Second.
We have a motion to confirm, uh, by Commissioner White, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Hagan, and, uh, can we please have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is a staff report from, um, the Office of Management and Budget regarding our COVID-19 programs and activities. Tom Fessler will go through this briefly because he will have the opportunity to come back to you and give you a final wrap-up report, but we'll have him go through, uh, where we are right now for you.
Thank you.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. Um, I, and the report today, the COVID report today, I, uh, I'm gonna, going to focus on changes to the report since the last report. Um, and that would start with, uh, the expenditures to date. And as you can see, uh, since the last report, a couple of weeks ago, expenditures have increased from two-hundred-and-seventeen million up to two-hundred-and-thirty-five million. Um, so at this point, we have expended approximately ninety-two percent of the funds that were provided to us. Um, as you're aware, uh, the timeframe on expending funds has been extended to, uh, December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one, so we still do have some time, um, available. Uh, we are anticipating that by the end of March, we will spend another twelve million dollars, so that will leave us with, uh, approximately ten to twelve million dollars, uh, that, that would remain at that point. Um, next slide. Um, we've added a graphic here to kind of give you a visual of how the funds have been expended. I think this is, um, uh, gives a really good snapshot. Uh, we have a lot, have had a lot of narrative in the staff report, um, but we thought that a graph might actually, um, be a little more, um, give you a little bit better view of how the funds were expended. You can see at the very bottom that the majority of the funds did go out to small businesses. Uh, we did share funds with, um, each of the cities. Um, and then we had our Housing Utility Financial Assistance Program at thirty-five million. Um, and then we, you can also see that we did prioritize workforce training, um, and then, uh, the other activities associated with, um, various other, um, priorities that were identified. The other, um, next couple of slides will focus on a couple of GIS maps. Uh, we thought this was also very telling. Wanted to, uh, provide the board with kind of another visual of where the funds were expended. Um, you can see that in the small business pro, this represents a small business program, um, approximately fifty-seven hundred applications, um, total amount expended close to ninety-three million dollars. Uh, you can see, um, here that it's segregated by the unincorporated area, each of the cities, and then also by, um, Commissioner districts. And a similar view also, um, with a similar view, we have that for our Housing Utility Financial Assistance Program. Um, you can see fifty-two hundred applications, um, over thirty-two million dollars expended, and then you can see the breakdown again between the unincorporated area, each of the cities, and then by Commissioner district. With that, um, the, um, final part of my report today, um, this is not actually in the report, but wanted to kind of give you an update on where we are with the new legislation. Um, so as you're aware, uh, back in December, uh, a new, uh, relief package was, uh, signed by the President. Uh, the primary benefit or the primary dollars coming through Hillsborough County will be for a Housing and Rental Assistance Program. We have been working very hard on that program. Um, but the county did receive thirty-two point four million dollars. Uh, the city of Tampa, under this program, also received funding of about twelve point one million dollars. We have been in conversations with the city of Tampa. We do see a benefit in having one program, and it does appear that, um, there has been some positive feedback from the city, uh, on, on creating a program that, uh, will be run by the county and that, uh, will involve all of the funding, um, associated with what, with, what the county received and the city received. We're still working through that, um, and we're still waiting for some guidance back from the, the US Treasury on that, um, as it relates to being able to share funds between entities. Uh, but we are working on that. We also have been working very closely with Ernst &amp; Young. As you're aware, we work with them, um, on our other small business and, uh, rental, Housing and Utility Assistance Program. We set up a system that now we're just, uh, we're able to use, and we're able to tweak that system based on the requirements that are now coming out with a new program for housing and rental assistance. We're gonna have to rework that, but we do intend to come back to you probably at the next meeting, uh, with an, a, a potential agreement with Ernst &amp; Young, and also, um, with, uh, having you approve or see the layout or design of the, this program, um, and have you approve that also. Um, and as Kevin had mentioned earlier, uh, one of the, the things that has just recently occurred is, um, an executive order has been signed by the President that also, um, should reimbursees for, um, a hundred percent of allowable cost under, uh, COVID-related expenditures that we've incurred. So, as you're aware, the county is normally, uh, responsible for about twelve and a half percent of, um, of expenses, but, um, with this new executive order, uh, we should be able to receive some additional reimbursement. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Move to receive the report?
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion to receive the report by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Cohen, and seeing, uh, no further questions or comments, uh, can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, we're at future discussion items. We have, uh, finished in, huh, record time for about the last year, I think. Um, and so I see, uh, Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I know the hour is late, and it's five after twelve, uh, but I, I do want to just take a moment. Um, I've been giving a lot of thought to our transportation workshop that we had, uh, about a week ago, and, uh, some of the really staggering challenges that we face in order to find the funds, to do the work that we, that we know that we have to do in order to not just keep our community safe, but also allow people mobility and, and the ability to, to travel without congestion. I know that the, the lawsuit over the sales tax, the one cent sales tax, has been pending for some time now, and it's now been a year since the oral arguments in front of the Supreme Court, and we still don't have a decision. Yet during that time, the money is being collected every day when people go to the cash register to purchase anything that, 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 uh, sales tax covers in this county, which is basically almost everything but food and essential items. I think that, that people have a right, if they're paying the money, to start to see some relief, uh, uh, for what it is that they're paying the money for. And, uh, I also would mention that, uh, those of us that are on the MPO see the safety statistics, and, and we see that our streets continue to be at the top, uh, when it comes to bicycle and pedestrian fatalities and other indicators of danger on our roadways. I, uh, I was told yesterday by the MPO that they've done a projection, um, and have, have determined that just the complete street projects, which are projects involving, um, bike lanes and, 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 uh, lane, lane, uh, diets, and, and not intersections, just, just the complete streets treatments that we use to move toward our Vision Zero goal, they, they have determined that without this tax, fifty-two severe crashes per year, um, which means crashes involving a death or an incapacitating injury could be prevented. And I think that because so much time has gone by, we have to start looking at the option of whether or not to start spending some of the one-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollars that is now segregated in, in escrow somewhere, awaiting this decision. If the decision comes down soon, it will provide us with some clarity, but if it doesn't, I think that we could just find ourselves in this, in this never, never land for a long, long time. And without some resolution, it makes it almost impossible for us to determine what else we ought to do in order to fund our transportation deficits. So I wanted to ask that our county administrator and our county attorney report back to us at our next scheduled meeting so that we can have a discussion about whether or not we ought to consider moving in this direction. It's been my understanding, and I'm gonna allow the county attorney to address this net in two weeks, but it's been my understanding that the impediments to our spending the money are not so much legal as they really are po, a policy issue, a, a, um, uh, an issue for the board to determine. And I think that at the very least, we ought to have the discussion. I, I think that it's time, we've waited a year, and, uh, as the money piles up and as the projects pile up, it's becoming more and more untenable not to have resolution so that we can move forward in some way, whatever that way is going to be. I think that we are to the point, though, where we just have got to do something. And, uh, our citizens are crying out to us. I know that, that in my own travels around the county, even with the pandemic keeping people at home and commuting patterns down, the congestion is, is, um, is unbearable, and, and we, the, the, the issue of not having transit options and not having safety in, uh, improvements in place, I think continues to really dog us as a community. So that is what I would ask to, to move forward with, uh, at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. I'd be anxious to have that discussion myself, so thank you for putting, putting that forward. Um, and do we have, uh, any other, uh, Commissioners with future items? I'm looking here. Okay, it doesn't look like we do, so I'm gonna, uh, mention, uh, two future items that I'd like to, um, ha, have the reports back about. Um, and, you know, I have just, um, wrestled with this, and, um, this is one, Commissioner White, that I hope you'll appreciate. Um, and, uh, as I am prone to do, I, uh, Googled around, um, trying to find out about farm, um, agriculture conservation areas, farmland trusts. I, I know it's something that you have said several times, and we really have never kind of gotten some traction or movement on that. Uh, but when I Googled it, one of the first things that came up, to my surprise, was, um, a program, uh, in, um, Marion County, um, to preserve horse farms. Uh, I think the county passed it in, uh, and I could have this mixed up because I just did some cursory looking. I think they passed it in about two thousand and five, and, um, and I got a little confused because actually Elachua County, I believe, also has something. Um, but, um, at one point, there was, um, like, five thousand agricultural acres preserved for agriculture, um, through partial, you know, buying back of a conservation easement, uh, and then the, uh, farms can, agriculture can continue on, um, but part of that value is in the, um, uh, conservation easement, uh, that then keeps it in agriculture in perpetuity. And, uh, apparently Elachua County has something like this, Marion County, but also there's something, I think, the Northern Florida Trust. Typically, it's been, um, state, uh, initiated, and there even seems to be something that was done in Florida, but I'm not sure it was maybe just left to gather dust after they passed it in the legislature. Uh, but, uh, other states have very, very active and, uh, you know, with a lot of acreage, um, that they preserved in agricultural, um, or conservation farmland trusts of some sort. So I'd like our county, um, to report back on, uh, looking at some of these programs and maybe, um, presenting us with some options for how we might, in Hillsborough County, move forward on, on such a program, because, uh, I think now is the time to make sure that we don't lose our agricultural, uh, heritage and our, um, our industry, and, uh, it's just very important. So I'm, I'm making that request. Um, and my second request is I'm also asking staff to report back about privately initiated text amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. Not map amendments, but text amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and options for reform under Florida law. I think a lot of counties don't have, uh, such a program. Um, the, our Comprehensive Plan- Um, the, our Comprehensive Plan is our land use constitution here in Hillsborough County. Yet under the current rules, the Planning Commission staff have to use their valuable time and limited resources to ju, just take the, entertain the requests of private interests to pay a certain amount of money. And, um, they present us with what they want to present us, to amend the language of our plan, um, throughout the county for their personal, um, private benefit. Um, and that can go on and, and keep the Planning Commission staff working on it without even a vote or consideration by this board. Um, and that's not how we handle our land development code. And, and I, moving forward, would like to, uh, see what we can do to, uh, remedy or change that because I just don't feel that that's good public policy. So if the staff, again, could report back on that. And, uh, I don't see any further, uh, comments or discussion at this time. And seeing none, we'll, um, stand adjourned.
We have to wish our hometown team. Go Bucks!